The Waynesville City Council meeting for July the sixteenth to order. Could you please call the roll, please?
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Councilman Farnum.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilman Curtis.
Here.
Councilman Rice.
Here.
Councilman Liberty.
Here.
Councilman Conley.
Here.
Councilman France.
Here.
We are now going to open this up for a public hearing regarding annexation of a piece of property on Sunlight Drive to the city of Waynesville. Is there any public comments regarding this annexation where?
Shouldn't we do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
I'm sorry. This has invocation then followed by the pledge of allegiance. Ed, would you please give us the invocation?
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing on this council, that we do the people's work in a way that will be pleasing to you and pleasing to the people. We ask your blessing on all the city workers and all the people who live in this fine city. I also ask your blessings on all members of the armed forces and on this company. We ask it all in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll open a public hearing regarding annexation of a piece of property on Sunlight Drive into the city of Waynesville. Is there any public comments? Is there any committee, uh, council comments?
Good.
We're going, we will adjourn this public meeting. We're going to the consent agenda amendment. There will be one slight change. Section C four should reach less resolution. I ask for a motion to approve the consent amendment.
Motion.
Sir, I'm like. Curse. Uh, show of hands.
Ted? Can you vote for the consent amendment?
We have a special guest tonight. We're gonna have a presentation for Stagecoach Stop and Janie Porter is going to represent the Stagecoach and I would like my two councilmen from that board to join me in front. It's a proclamation in honoring the old Stagecoach Stop. Whereas Old Stagecoach Stop, a jewel of downtown Waynesville, was established as an informative museum in nineteen eighty-four after serving, after several years of renovation was completed in honor to save the historical building. Whereas nine board members, all who volunteered their time, effort and injury and energy, worked tirelessly to promote the education of the public on the Stagecoach Stop's colorful history and whereas Old Stagecoach Stop and its members of the board have supported downtown Waynesville through the years by participating in all downtown festivities and the city events to include Freedom Fest, Christmas on the Square, and Old Settlers' Day. And whereas, after receiving several awards over the years to include Outstanding Nonprofit of the Year by the Chamber of Commerce in two thousand nineteen, the wonderful staff remains humble, dedicated, and determined to educate and inform the public through the Old Settlers Gazette, which they publish and many events they participate in, participate in throughout the county and beyond. Now therefore be resolved that I, Dr. Jerry Brown, Mayor of the city of Waynesville, do hereby proclaim Old Stagecoach Stop the business spotlight winner for August of two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A second presentation on special events and special guests is Mr. Sheldon, Electric Department, who's going to show us what we received from the city of Lebanon for our efforts in helping them cope with their sudden wind problem a couple months ago. And it is heavy.
Very heavy.
If you wouldn't mind reading their, their presentation to us?
Says, "In appreciation for your contribution to the storm recovery of Lebanon, Missouri, May twenty twenty, this is presented to and it has all of the cities and people that was there." We went up there, Josh and I went up there to help them. It was on May fourth, we were up there a week. We received letters from their aldermen and then we also received a letter directly from their Public Works, no, their Electric Department Superintendent. They really appreciated. We were there for, worked countless hours and throughout the night and very gracious host, so you gotta get over here so you can get a picture too.
Don't be bashful.
All right, squeeze in.
Thank you.
What did we get when we sent you to Florida?
We got a pin.
You got a pin?
Yeah.
And a T-shirt.
We got a letter from the mayor.
Yeah, we did get a letter from the mayor.
Yeah. That's pretty nice. Pretty nice.
Do we have any citizens comment for this evening? We'll start with our board commission reports, the park board, Mr. Beamer.
Now I want to start off by saying, uh, Mr. Mayor Brown, Councilman Rice, and Superintendent Doyle, congratulations on your new post and I'm looking forward to working with the three of you. Our meeting started at six oh seven. We were kinda waiting for another meeting to stop, but decided not to stop, so we went ahead with it. We started out with Pastor Danny Graves with, uh, from Faith Baptist Letters and Prayer. Next month, John Shaw, pastor from Westside, will be our guest at the August thirteenth meeting. I'm gonna make a lot of this short. I'm gonna start right off with the master gardeners. They are finally allowed to meet, but have no place to meet. So they're looking for a place to meet, because every place that they've ever been or gone to have their own restrictions that they can't make it in there. So I'm actually looking into a possibility, see what happens. Basically, everything's the same. The one fifty-six exit sign, they finally got everything set with that water and the fire department's gonna keep it filled for them. And now they got power to where they can actually keep those bushes and flowers all taken care of out there. As far as the demonstration garden goes, it's coming along. They have lost a loop of a few flowers up there. They're replacing the ones that are dying out. Straight into WSR. WSR for the fall. Actually, the numbers are just as good as they are every year, so they've had good sign up on that. One of the things that the WSR is looking for is some way to bring money in, so they're looking for ways to do that. As everybody knows, Aaron and now Aaron are running the WSR. So we're trying to come up with different names for them. For that up. I hate to go through this so fast, but Park Superintendent Trey managed to finally get a full-time help and as you see, all the parks are really looking good. They're cut. They shouldn't have to really cut a whole lot, because it ain't raining, in case anybody hasn't noticed. And the Splash Park still has a leak for continuing to run it. It's on that two-inch line and they're gonna wait until the season's over to do the repairs on it. So basically, they've just been weeding, cleaning, and getting caught up on their stuff. The event coming up, of course, is Old Settlers' Day, twenty-second, twenty-sixth Annual Duck Race. I apologize, I don't know what that is. July twenty-fifth. The eighteenth, the Usable Ministries Church Community Prayer War would be on. That's what I got there. We did have a court. We did not vote on the minutes for June. We had to push it, because there was some difficulties in it. So the June and July minutes will be gone over in the August thirteenth meeting and that's when they will be either approved or something pushed again, which we hopefully don't have to. I had a meeting today with Mayor Brown and Superintendent Doyle. We're looking into some projects that need to get done. Some of them been on the books for quite a while. And that includes the playground equipment for Tiger Park. So hopefully that will all get started and get going. And I had a really good meeting with them. They, they told me how the nuts have cracked, so I know what I gotta do now. But I like the ideas they're coming up with. And that's about all. It was six forty-seven, our meeting was called. That's it. Anybody got a question?
I got a question. The master gardeners, what are, what's the frequency and the time of the meetings?
That I have to get from her. I met the caller today and I forgot I'm gonna call her tomorrow. Mayor Brown and I are getting together on something, something tomorrow, approximately nine o'clock in the morning, hopefully. And then after that, I have a few phone calls to make. I will make Mrs. Olmsted one of my calls.
I might have an opportunity to, that's why I'm asking that question.
Okay. How many people does it hold?
How many people do we have? No, I'm just talking.
Well, actually, they don't know.
So they, I think they, they used to meet in there, so what I'm doing is kinda opening up specific times, so I just need to know the time.
Did you want me to get her, get her view together?
Yes.
Okay. I can do that. No problem. She'll be glad, because she's looking for something. They used to meet at the senior center and I know nothing's going on here. They used to have this lot downstairs where they do model. Yeah. I'll, I'll look you through, it'd be better for you to talk back and forth without me being in the meeting here. She knows more than I do. Any other questions?
Lawrence? Yes, remember the ugly lady we had in here gave us a report on those invasive vines that are on many of our trees.
Right vine?
I told our park superintendent, he might wanna talk to the scouts. That works, I mean, that's a bunch of labor right there. It's a pretty easy project for an eagle scout to go to and they are old enough to do that kinda thing with hand tools.
I don't remember the name of the group, but there has been, I believe it was a thirty person group that did go through and do a lot of work. I got a lot of feedback on that and Bonnie was one of them. She wanted to know what was going on and I didn't know until the meeting what it was and Trey said they, they came in, volunteered, and went to cut all that and brush out. So she was really happy to see progress in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Hey, Mr. Beamer?
Thank you, sir.
Planning and zoning, did not have a meeting for July, but John, do you have anything to add about the planning and zoning?
No, we, there was not a need for a meeting in July, however, we have adjustment, Board of Adjustments meeting this month, or the twenty-first. I would like to make sure that is out there. It's twenty-first of July, there is a Board of Adjustments meeting.
Okay, reports from standing committees, roads and grounds. Mr. France?
Okay, I called that meeting to order at four-thirty on July ninth. First order business, as at every year after an election, there is selection of committee chairman. Councilman Farnum, Farnum made a motion to keep me as chairman. It was unanimously passed. Annexation of industrial park. If you remember, we bought a hundred acres that adjoins our industrial park, but it's become somewhat overwhelmed because of coronavirus and other activities, but we're now catching up, so you'll see there's a, there's an ordinance in here to bring it into the city. It's located off Sunlight Lane, as earlier stated. Update on proposed policy for operation of the Leek and Limp facility. Basically, it was left open this last week, so that people recovering from the storm and our city employees were picking up stuff that was left by the curb, as we put on our Facebook page, could dump that stuff in the, in there. But it should be starting to be locked up starting next week and we have several keys that can be signed for and you'll have your, one of your, an ID, a picture ID copied and you'll have to turn in the key to get your picture ID torn up, because if you fail to turn in the key within a reasonable amount of time, basically it's a twenty-five dollar fee. But I was out there all weekend long dumping some branches and we got a bunch of people going in there cutting up wood, I figure, so that's, that's a good thing. But I did see a bunch of black plastic trash bags back in there. I didn't see any appliances though, but a lot of trash bags. So hopefully this will help cure that or we'll just do something else. Varren parking issue, as you remember, last meeting, we tabled an ordinance, because it has a few things wrong with it. It is now being corrected by the committee. It brought forward, you'll see you have an ordinance on that, to where one side of the street is still, is still full parking and then that portion of the street from the stop sign to the entrance to the senior center is off limits, but that's a very short distance. So people still have more room to park on the street going up on the left side from there on. But there is no parking on the cul-de-sac. Okay? Glen Haven. If any of you got a chance to drive through Glen Haven, you'll see where there was a three-foot wide ditch put in there and if you got there while it was pulling out what was rotted, the old culvert that was under there, the entire bottom was rotted out. It was absolutely crusty and so they put in the new tunnels of the new conduit or whatever and they've got it back in and so once paving takes place, they'll get paved, but the curb's gotta go back in first. Have they done the curbing or are we waiting on contractors?
We're waiting on, uh, Tim's here.
So waiting on contractor, once they get that done, then paving can take place. Street department update. Street department's been busy with Glen Haven project, taking debris off to the Leek dump and the Limp dump. Street sweeping, clearing rightways, and cleaning out ditches. Other business, John Doyle said the city had received a Volkswagen Trust Government Truck Grant. If you remember, when Volkswagen got caught lying on their emissions, part of that settlement went to all the states and this is our second award, thanks to Miriam. This time, put it in, we're getting sixty-one thousand, two hundred, five hundred and twenty dollars and that's going to go towards a new Peterbilt dump truck for the street department. There was a need for closed session. We entered into closed session at five PM. We came out at five oh seven. I made a motion to approve the sale of the city-owned lots on Center Street. Councilman Conley made a motion, Councilman Farnum, Farnum seconded, and the motion passed. Having no further business, I adjourn the meeting at five oh seven PM. Next meeting, August sixth, at four-thirty PM. Subject to your questions.
Any questions for Mike?
Okay. We have a couple ordinances, Mr. Mayor.
First one would be to remove Bill twenty twenty dash one from the table. I entertain a motion, bring that back out, take a motion, second.
Second.
Mr. Davis? Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilman France.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have an ordinance to prohibit parking on Varren Lane. I'd like to entertain a motion for that ordinance.
I'll make the motion. Also, I get it.
Any questions?
I need to read it.
Oh.
Ordinance number twenty-four twenty-three. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-two seventy-eight regarding prohibited parking on Varren Lane fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-two seventy-eight regarding prohibited parking on Varren Lane fixing an effective date.
Mr. Davis? At the top of the page says ordinance number twenty-four twenty-three, then the title's twenty-two seventy-eight.
That's the ordinance we're amending. Twenty-two seventy-eight is what we're amending within the year.
All right.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman France.
Yes.
Passes. We propose ordinance annexing real property to the city of Waynesville from Sunlight Lane. I ask for a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Davis?
Second.
Mr. France? Uh, Mr. Doyle, would you kind of, I'd like this on that one?
Has the, um...
Open together. You gotta read it.
First reading, an ordinance extending limits of the city of Waynesville fixing an effective date, one hundred acres. A second reading, an ordinance extending limits of the city of Waynesville fixing an effective date, one hundred acres.
This property is the property that we have, actually had the public hearing on this evening. It brings our industrial park and as Mike had mentioned earlier in his report, this was through COVID and the coronavirus and all the planning and scheduling there. This is something that has been pushed back until we could meet as a council, but it is basically just allowing annexing that property into the city for, you know, future development and growth of our industrial park.
Call, please.
Councilman France.
Absolutely.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
An ordinance passes. Mr. France, you've got such a good job with utility utilities.
Okay, I called the Utility Committee meeting to order on July seventh at three-thirty. We had all members present. It was once again time to reestablish leadership in the committee. Once again, I was reappointed as chairman of the Utility Committee. So moving on, twenty-twenty proposed amended budget. Mr. Doyle presented the committee with a twenty-twenty proposed budget amendment, which we normally do at this time of year, mid-year, showing each utility revenue and expenses to look over and review. Councilman Wilson made a motion to move the adjustments forward to the city council for approval and Councilman Conley seconded it, unanimous vote. Update on eliminating the three percent convenience fee for credit card and online payment. We started this at the beginning of COVID nineteen, so this home people felt more paying online versus coming in and paying. It was basically a safety factor for our citizens. And so we have been waiving the three percent fee that normally credit cards would charge, though some charge less than three percent, some charge four and a half percent, pay on the card type. Anyhow, we have discussed it. They're talking that it could be a reimbursable expense through the CARES Act. We have sent that to the local committee for them to take a look at and determine, which they are not the ultimate determinant factor, I don't believe. Doesn't the state have to say yes to or something? It's just this committee?
Everything is here in account.
Okay. But we're waiting, we're waiting on them to give us a word on it. So it's still in effect. Proposed adjusting utility availability, charge, and impact fees. This is strictly on natural gas. Right now, the impact fee on natural gas is hundred dollars, hundred, hundred?
One fifty.
Hundred, one fifty?
And two fifty.
And two, and two fifty, depending on what kind of appliances you have that are ran by gas. But, you know, once you get that line in there, we have to maintain it to the meter of that. You do it internal to your home. For that, one, it costs us almost four hundred dollars to get that service established and to pay that back, the one fifty and two fifty isn't even close and your availability fee right now is six dollars a month. So it's, if you live in that house for a long, long time, we may, and use a lot of gas, we may make our investment back. So basically, we have adjusted all the other impact fees and the availability fees on all the other commodities, utilities that we do, water, sewer, electric, and that. And so we are looking at natural gas. They're coming back to us next month to bring us recommendations in regard to the raising of those fees. Next department updates, Mr. Sheldon stated that his department had four power outages, four streetlights, four trees, three miscellaneous, and two new service work orders for the month of June. Mr. Sheldon also stated that his department has completed the East Elementary School project, cleared some rightways in the city, started back to work on the feeder line C to D, tie-in, and is... and installed new underground primary set transformers for the new jail and the maintenance building. Water and wastewater department, Mr. Eldridge stated that his department installed six remeters, repaired eight service line leaks, replaced two settlers, and installed a new hydrant by Tremont Drive. Sewer department has been hauling slugs and jetted one sewer line this month. Gas department, Mr. York stated that his department has new installations coming up and has hired a new employee to start in a couple of weeks. If you all remember Bubba, he is now the gas guy for Richland. He replaced their guy that was, had been trying to retire for quite some time, but couldn't. Closed session, there was a necessity for closed session. We went into closed session at 4:06 PM. We came out at 4:49. And I adjourned the meeting, there being no further business at 4:50 PM. Next meeting is August 4th at 3:30. You're welcome to a table. Subject to your questions.
No questions. Fund is the Human Resources Committee. Mr. Liberty?
Meeting was called through order at 17:10. There were no citizens present for comment. Selection of the committee chairman, Councilman Davis made a motion that I continue as chairman, and Councilman Curtis seconded it. Review the bill, receive monthly budget review, revenue tracking at fifty-one percent with expenses at forty-six percent. Tax revenue update from Amber Bock, stated that tax revenue is on track, set gross receipts. Met the June 30th deadline for the middle of the city audit. Other business was updated on recent rental estate transactions. And one advised the city would select it for another VW dump grant, which has already been covered.
We have three ordinances, two ordinances and a resolution coming out of your committee.
Yes.
Ordinance number one is the ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
First reading, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020 budget, repealing conflicted ordinances, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020 budget, repealing conflicting ordinances, fixing an effective date.
John, would you like us on that one?
Sure. So the, some of the changes to the 2020 budget, we're going to utilize some remaining CLP funds that need to be expended prior to the end of the fiscal year, end of this year. We're going to inject these funds into the budget and that revision is shown in here. We also obviously are adjusting the budget for the sale of property, which has been mentioned. We, you guys remember the American Tower, Cell Tower site, as well as industrial park lot 3A. We have sold that over there. The grant funds, VW grant funds, we're trying to put that into the budget as well. So, so we have a lot of changes that we have made to the budget like that. Some minor changes, things that aren't probably as apparent as, as the ones we mentioned. We're, we're kind of re-itemizing our budget. In review of the budget, we've noticed there are a few lines that were not used, year in, year out. We budget for these items and then at the end of the year, we see that the amount that we put in there is the same. So we go back a year and back a year and we've realized over the last three, four years that these line items are unexpended funds. So we're gonna remove those and maybe try to detail a few, few more line items in the budget so we know exactly, you know, what's going on there. And maybe it's a little more self-explanatory as we review these in, in the future.
Call for a roll call.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes. We have another proposed ordinance amending the city personnel manual. Tracy, would you read that ordinance?
Yes, first reading, ordinance amending ordinance number 2191, modifying the employee personnel manual regarding on-call time and overtime pay, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2191, modifying the employee personnel manual regarding on-call time and overtime pay, fixing an effective date.
Is there a motion?
Second.
John, would you explain that one for us?
Okay, we're basically putting a definition to the work week into the employee manual. Right now, we have one definition of work week in the manual, but we actually have two separate types of employees. We have employees that are going to work in utilities, city hall, just your, what I would say, regular employees. They are on a forty-hour a week, eighty-hour pay period schedule. And that is how our work week is defined within our personnel manual. We also have a police department who works under the 171 rule, okay? And it is defined in the personnel manual as well. However, when you read the work week, it is a forty-hour a week, eighty-hour pay period. And these guys are actually forty-three hours a week, eighty-six hours per pay period. So we had to define that to basically separate those two time cards, if you will.
Roll call please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes, John, we've got a bunch of people in the audience that may not understand who is 171 versus forty hours.
171 only is emergency personnel. So, you know, firefighters, fire department, obviously your police department here. The rule of 171 means in a twenty-eight day period, you can work a hundred and seventy-one hours. And then it is broken down based upon the time, the pay period time that the city may have. So we actually pay every two weeks. So those employees can work up to eighty-six hours in two weeks without getting overtime or having comp time, okay? Because their schedules allow them to work shifts, long shifts. So they're accommodated for that extra time by days off in their schedule. So if you work twelve-hour shifts, you might work three on, two off, two on, three off. So you actually have more time off than, than the forty-hour or eighty-hour pay period employee.
Good. Roll call. Where are you then? Let's move to the ordinance then. We have an ordinance accepting a grant funding from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources.
Actually, this is the resolution.
Resolution.
And actually, you can read it once, mayor, and...
We have a resolution authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator to accept grant fundings from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. I have a motion.
Motion.
Second. Mr. Davis? Will sell. Mr. Wilson? John?
This is for the VW grant that has been discussed this evening. I received from DNR, it was sixty-one, five twenty, I think, was the amount. It is going towards a newer dump truck that we are attempting to purchase and will actually pay for nearly half that brand-new dump truck. So it's kind of an exciting deal. This is one, I think, you would for sure want to pass.
Are you saying that that dump truck will haul, it takes two of our dump trucks?
Yeah, it's not, maybe a little more, maybe closer to three. It's a tandem axle, probably a fifteen-yard, yeah. Very, very nice piece of equipment.
Very good.
Do you know one of those crazy illegal Volkswagens that California misses soon? I'm driving one in Park. They're reselling them for half the price right now. Still getting good mileage, forty-five miles a year.
Roll call.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes, we change one word. Instead of sixteen hours, I think, it's still a lot.
Okay.
Councilman France?
Absolutely.
Did that pass? Police committee, Mr. Liberty?
Meeting was called through order at 3:30. There were no citizens to comment. Councilman Wright made a motion that I be reappointed as committee chair. Councilman Curtis seconded it, never seen anyone. Police department printer and copier, Mr. Doyle is handling that to get the department a printer slash copier that works very well instead of the current one that is repaired quite frequently. Emergency pursuit policy still under review. Department update, DWI grant. They got known DWIs, which is a good thing, but they did get some other violations. Critical incident team, which provides active crisis, it's crisis intervention team. They have, they're the ones that train officers and other people on how to handle these different types of emergency calls. And if you would like a better definition, I will hang around and mention it more. Next meeting was scheduled for August 6th, 2020. And this meeting was called to discontinued at 3:30.
Questions? Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board, Mr. Wilson?
The airport board meeting was canceled last month. The next meeting is scheduled for the 28th of July at 3:00 PM at St. Robert Municipal Hall.
Thank you. Economic Development Committee, Mr. Farnum?
Okay, economic development on June 7th, it's kind of dark, you know, that's the day we had the storm. Our meeting was conducted by little ladders down from the table for the electric to come back on. We had quite a little bit of discussion on the sales of property on Discovery Drive. We discussed annexation of industrial park land, which we will be taking care of tonight. We did some discussion on medical marijuana business licenses, being worked on at this time. And also, we talked about food truck services for the Waynesville City Park system. And that is also being worked on. The business spotlight, what we've already presented the award tonight for the Old States folks, Stop New Sam, fifth month of July. And next month, we have every group and family park business being a spotlight. The other business that was discussed was especially against Old Sover day coming up and the duck race, which I believe the duck race is on Saturday, so Old Sover starts on Friday, runs through Sunday. The duck race is always popular, a lot of people have urged everybody who's never seen it, go down to the river and watch it. It's kind of fun. We had a meeting for closed session. We went into closed session and we discussed some businesses about some land lease. And we came back out, but that was the end of the meeting. In our packets tonight, we do have a proposed ordinance, ordinance, excuse me, authorizing lease of property to Low Chevrolet. Tracy, can you read that ordinance?
Yes. First reading, an ordinance approving a lease agreement by and between the city of Waynesville, Missouri and Low Chevrolet, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance approving a lease agreement by and between the city of Waynesville, Missouri and Low Chevrolet, fixing an effective date.
That's with a motion? I would make a motion, Mayor Farnum.
Second.
Mr. Wilson? Roll call please. John, would you like to? Yep, Mr. Wilson?
No discussion.
Oh, all right, discussion?
John, would you like to add? I have a question on Mr. Farnum, the food truck services. So what, what is in, are they authorized to be in the park right now?
I think right now we're in a discussion on the lease agreement. If you answer that, we'll answer your way.
I have no questions on the lease.
I can, yeah, this, this is basically leasing the property immediately south of Low Chevrolet. They currently have a few vehicles parked there. I think it's vehicles that they maybe bought from the auction or maybe sent into an auction. They actually currently maintain this lot for, they, they previously had it leased from Hicks and McFarlane, who owned the property before. So Mr. Brent Lowe came and visited one day and was expressed interest in keeping that lot. He said he would keep it maintained like he has. He expressed, you know, the entire history of the lot, how he used to own it and now he doesn't. You know, working with the city and other developers trying to get some businesses going in that area. But his, his intent was to continue using the lot as he does.
John, didn't he agree to take care of the maintenance while he uses it? And they also have a ninety-day clause that...
Both, both, that's kind of a two-direction clause. He, he can activate that clause and be out of it ninety days, or we can activate the clause and be out of it ninety days. He did agree to maintain the lot, like you said, keep the, keep the grass mowed. And the insurance obviously was, was not, was not an issue. He has the insurance now. He expressed that in, in the meeting that we had. But like I said, currently, he's, he's interested in utilizing the lot in its current configuration is what you see now.
Roll call on that. Any other questions?
Yep, environmental, when you're dealing with vehicles now, you have oils, fluids and stuff like this. If they have issues with that, trading one to our land, they are responsible for taking the appropriate environmental responsibility for cleaning it up?
Right, and, and that is where the five million aggregate would be.
Do we do any inspections or anything at any time?
Would what?
Do we do any inspections or of the property at any time?
To inspect, sure.
Any other questions? Sure, roll call.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman France?
That's there.
Can you go about the food truck?
Yeah, are they authorized in there? Cause there's one that's been down there in the park.
So I'm aware of one that has been in the park and they were actually, they may have been operating at the time, but once we discovered they were in operation, we immediately required them to come get a city business license, which they did not have. And then that led to other licenses that they needed to acquire, which they currently did not have. So I was only aware of one. They were in operation most of the day, but there was nobody in the truck. They were at C-Hall and running other places trying to acquire the appropriate license to...
Do they have to collect tax?
They, they should collect tax inside the city.
Okay, then we derive a sales portion of sales tax. How do we monitor that?
To my knowledge, it's, it's going to be difficult to monitor. Our proposed food truck court or food vendor court is a better way to maybe corral and/or monitor the situation and how many trucks that are actually operating. I think as, as this idea grows and, and these people, they, they will be, they will be more familiar with the city as the city with them. Right now, I'm not familiar with any of the food trucks, okay? But I think as we designate areas that they can operate in and we start seeing them set up in those locations through, you know, a weekend or actually do a food truck or court, vendor court, they will become more familiar with us and then it'll be easier for us to monitor their activity and, and their sales and things like that.
Well, I know the one I saw was taking up five parking spaces, cause it's parked along with, where if that park gets busy, it's already difficult to park here.
You seen the same one I seen.
Okay.
I doubt, guarantee, it was, I... I doubt, guarantee, it was, I took a picture of it, because I was.
It was a black van with?
That's it.
Okay.
That's it. So that's the one that, and they left it parked there. They had a personal vehicle at that location as well, and they went to do running, trying to get to operation. Some of the hardships that she explained that she was facing currently was, you know, the inability to get a health department approval because of COVID, and they had delayed it, but trying to get our business license actually requires a up-to-date, which would be a twenty-twenty approval. They have the twenty-nineteen and have never, so there are some.
I really like the idea of offering services to our citizens down there in the park, but I just want to make sure, we may need to provide an area to parking to where they're not taking up citizens' parking.
I agree. I agree, and we're looking.
That's part of our discussion.
Yes, it was. We are actually looking into that. That committee's looking into that now.
Okay, that answered my questions.
Any other businesses for the council?
Yes, we've got this report.
Oh, that's the next one. City affairs report, number seven.
This may be the?
It sounds like it's going to end it. I'm ready to go home.
Going to keep this very brief, because everything on the first page you see was covered. The park restroom's coming along nicely, though. I've seen some pictures today of the steps that were poured and the ramp that has been poured, and it's coming along nicely. It's going to be a very nice project when it's completed. The B W grant, obviously, we're very proud of that as a city and as a team, because that's just another grant that we have acquired, which expands the tools we have out in field to accomplish our mission and our job. The storm cleanup, was going to speak a little bit about the leaf and limb dump. I hope the people are listening, watching. There will be a Facebook post tomorrow. We're going to leave it open this weekend. It will be open this weekend, but please, please, please get your leafs, limbs from the storm debris, get it in there, because come Monday, where you will be locking the gates with the signs on the gate to contact city hall, just like Mike mentioned. So, and then the youth sports program, which is not talked about a whole lot, but currently we're planning a full-fall schedule. Please have your kids sign up, get your kids involved, get them out there. Volleyball, I know we need more kids in volleyball as we progress, I've heard that, but it appears the other events, soccer is really taking off, so sign up, we're still open. And then the upcoming events is the A S Y M C A duck race and Old Soverday on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Council comments?
When we, next time we move stuff off at the stump dump, if we could, if you look behind where the stuff's currently being dumped at, there's probably thirty yards, forty yards behind. They just seem to pull in and dump real tight. Maybe we need to kind of direct them further back, because we're not, I mean, it'd be less pushing off, because people could get in there. I mean, it's really tight where everybody's dumping it, and you can't drive over the stuff. I mean, there's stumps out there that us three couldn't reach around. And that, it goes for the commercial guys as well as our citizens, but if we could just kind of see if we could figure out some way to get them to go all the way back, because I mean, there was a clean field behind this ring of branches and stumps and everything like this, where one, it'd slow down the number of times we got to push stuff back, and two, we could get more in there before we have to push back easily. Yeah?
Well, I agree with what you said, and I hope this plan works out. We've tried several and haven't. It requires cooperation of citizens. I can't really understand how you can be so worried about your lawn, that you pick up all these rascally, like a vacuum cleaner, but you're not concerned with leaving them in a plastic bag to be around for a couple hundred years. I'm probably in a little discomfort, I'm proud of this city. We've done well, and I'm glad to see we have people in the office.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes, nonetheless, thank you for everybody that's attended the meeting. Thank you for Mr. Doyle and his staff, and the city workers of Waynesville. You guys make us look good, and thank you for all the volunteers.
Mr. Rice?
I'm just excited about Old Soverday, I really love that. I think we've got a great park, they put on a great show, Civil War, the horses, everything. I think everybody would come out and see that.
Mr. Curtis?
I'm glad we got the storm dump, but a couple of citizens have called me. I guess people are dumping things in Mitchell Creek again.
Yes.
We need to make sure we're not dumping stuff in Mitchell Creek. We don't want that thing to back up coming next spring when they have flooding again. So please, don't dump stuff in Mitchell Creek.
Mr. Wilson?
Just continue to enjoy the family this summer, and also be mindful, there are more people out doing things in the streets and the neighborhoods that do not have sidewalks, to watch your speed, please, so we can not have any major issues with children getting injured and things like that. So I just say, just slow down in the neighborhoods and continue to enjoy this time.
Mr. Davis?
I want to reiterate Councilman Wilson's words there. Kids are out, kids are everywhere, retirement being cooked up in the house, so they're out and everywhere. Also, I want to give a thank you to one of the most difficult jobs in the city. I was at Casey's the other day, and a police officer handled the situation very well. He had looked like he had been on chase, a good brisk walk, because he's kind of a tall guy. He'd been on a brisk walk for about two to three blocks, and they contained the situation in Casey's parking lot, and, you know, he had a camera in his face the whole time. So it's tough to be a police officer right now, and I just want to say thanks to the police force.
Mr. Farin?
I just want to remind people that if you haven't filled out your census paper, Marcus, get it filled out and sent in. Do it online, a lot quicker, a lot easier. That extra time will come back to help benefit the city, the county, the state, and more companies. Do it done.
Thanks. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
I realize the time has passed for citizens to comment, but we do have a lady in the back.
Yes, ma'am. Can you? Kill it here?
I have a. My name is Rainne Brown. I have a question regarding what Mr. France said. You stated that at the stump dump, that citizens and commercial people are dumping it. I thought that was only for citizens and not for businesses.
Businesses have the right to go in there, and they come to the city and pay a significant amount to utilize that facility, which helps reduce your costs as a citizen for using that facility, and it helps pay us. If you notice, we've got our track loader up there to keep pushing stuff off. So it helps pay for that, but that's, it's there for, that's been opened up for them also.
Okay, as far as the, I mean, because I've gone up there and dumped brush before, and I've seen things out there that are not brushed. Would it be possible to maybe create a position for someone to work there, like when it's, when the gate is open, so you, they can, you know, keep an eye on what's being dumped and what's illegal and what's not? Because I've gone up there, and like you said, there's stuff there that is definitely not brushed.
I'll tell you, man, we booked it next week.
Oh, is that going to start?
It's going to start, the key entry is going to start, where if somebody wants to use it, they have to come up here and get a key, drop off the copy of the driver's license. When they bring back the key, we give them back the copy of their driver's license for sure.
Right, but is someone going to go and check after every citizen goes and dumps?
We are looking for other sources to monitor that.
Okay, that was my question. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Final comment I'll make is, I appreciate the help from the council and the city clerk and the city manager. This is my first full committee meeting, and I'm a work in progress, so I appreciate all the help you give.
Very, very appreciate it.